All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being with us tonight. Looks like we've got a packed house. Glad to see you all here. I'm going to call this February 25th, 2025, meeting, Hybrid Administrative Meeting of the Board of County Commissioners to Order. Commissioner Barb Boa is with us via Zoom this evening, so we'll be doing all of our voting by roll call votes. I'd like to start this evening with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by our Fire Chief and Deputy County Manager of Public Safety, Greg Perez. Madam County Manager, are there any changes or additions to the agenda this evening?
So first, we want to say happy birthday to the Chief. Where do you go? All right, our gift to you is we're not singing. You're welcome. Item eight, Commissioners, Estancia Basin Water Planning Committee appointment will be removed from consent and added under approvals as item 11(c). A vote is required for the above change to the agenda.
Thank you, Madam County Manager. Commissioners, are there any other changes? Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Thank you. I would like to add a recognition under our proclamation's recognition of the 50th anniversary of the Albuquerque Main Library.
All right, so that'll become item 4b, recognition of Main Library. Any other changes this evening, Commissioners? Seeing none, if we could get a roll call vote for those changes?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Walt Benson.
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Mr. Chair Olivas.
Yes, and if you could go back one more time.
Vice Chair Barboah.
I'm sorry, I was broken out. Can you rename the vote? Sorry, thank you.
Madam Vice Chair, this vote is for the additions and changes to the agenda.
Oh, yes, thank you.
So called.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Passes on a 5-0, and that takes us on to our proclamation. So first, well, both of our proclamations this evening will be with Commissioner Baca. Take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This proclamation, and I'd like to ask Agnes Noonan to come to the podium, please. Thank you, Ms. Noonan. This is an acknowledgement that Agnes Noonan has dedicated her career to advancing economic equity and fostering entrepreneurship among women, people of color, and low-wealth individuals, exemplified by her remarkable tenure as President of the Women's Economic Self-Sufficiency Team, also known as West, and acknowledging that since joining West in 1991, Agnes played a pivotal role in transforming the organization from a single-office operation into a statewide leader in small business assistance with seven offices across New Mexico, providing business, consulting, training, incubation, and access to capital, and acknowledging that under Agnes' leadership, West launched its Enterprise Center and Incubation Program in downtown Albuquerque in 2009, established innovative programs such as the Studio at West, and continues to expand its resources. Acknowledging that Agnes' visionary leadership and advocacy earned her and West numerous accolades, including the SBA Micro Lender of the Year, Diverse Business Champion of the Year, the New Mexico Ethics in Business Award, as well as her personal recognition as top-performing CEO, New Mexico Business Hall of Fame inductee, and recipient of the SBA Legacy Award, and acknowledging that Agnes has been unwavering in her passion for personal and business financial literacy, equipping countless entrepreneurs with the tools to achieve financial independence and long-term success. And one more, acknowledging that Agnes' dedication and collaborative spirit have inspired and mobilized West's board members, staff, donors, volunteers, and community partners to pursue the shared vision of an equitable economy for all New Mexicans. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Burnley County Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize and honor Agnes Noonan for her extraordinary contribution to West, the state of New Mexico, and the field of economic empowerment. We extend to Agnes our gratitude and heartfelt congratulations on her retirement and wish her continued success in all future endeavors, done this 25th day of February 2025 in Burnley County, state of New Mexico. Thank you, Agnes.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Baca. It's a little embarrassing for me. I don't like to have anyone talk about me that much. It's been an honor to serve the state, and I suspect everyone in this room knows how important small businesses, small and micro businesses are to the state of New Mexico. But nothing is done in isolation. I've had lots of great staff and great board members along the way, including Shirley Reagan, who served on West's board back in the 1990s as our... Well, I know, but hey, Shirley, we're getting old. So I just want to say and thank all of the folks in the community who've been so supportive of West and of me, so thank you for the honor.
Thank you, Agnes. And I would just like to make one statement and ask you to come up to get a picture with us, but as Burnley County Commission is embarking on taking a look at our economic development and supporting small businesses, and we're moving forward with that in a big way this year in 2025, I think this is really appropriate, and you're invited to the table as always with your advice and expertise. So, thank you, Agnes.
Happy to, thanks very much.
Come on up and receive your proclamation. And also, this is a very, very important proclamation to me, or recognition, rather. My mother was a librarian, my dad was a teacher. We all know the importance of education, not the least of which is in our public libraries. And just on Saturday, we celebrated the 50th anniversary of our main library downtown. So I think we have a board member here that I'd like to invite up. Oh, yes, Ms. Janet Sayers. Come on up, and I'll read the...
But I think there might also be the manager of the Main Branch Library.
Is she?
No? Okay.
Thank you. Whereas for 50 years, the Albuquerque and Burnley County Main Library at 501 Copper Avenue Northwest has been a cornerstone of knowledge, culture, and community engagement, serving as a vital resource for residents of all ages. And whereas the Albuquerque and Burnley County Public Library System is a successful joint partnership between the City of Albuquerque and Burnley County, which together fund 19 public libraries and provide access to 400 public computers. And whereas the Main Library, designed by esteemed architect George Pearl of SMPC Architects, and later renovated by CSR Architects, stands as a stunning example of regional brutalism, featuring an open plan, concrete columns, brown brick, and an innovative flexible wall and ceiling system. And whereas this architectural landmark continues to inspire with enduring design and adaptability, remaining a hub for learning, civic engagement, and cultural enrichment, and serves as a beacon of learning, creativity, community connection, reflecting Albuquerque's commitment to education and innovation. And whereas the successful volunteer program, Friends of the Library, runs a bookstore at this location in downtown at the Main Library, they accept thousands of donated books each year, and the proceeds of which fund a countywide summer reading program.
Yes.
And whereas the 50th anniversary celebration of the Main Library took place on February 22nd, 2025, bringing the community together through an open house and community resource fair, interactive activities, and lecture, and live music this past weekend. And whereas Burnley County continues to support the importance of a dynamic and accessible library system, now therefore be it resolved that the Burnley County Board of Commissioners acknowledges the 50th anniversary of the Albuquerque-Burnley County Main Library and honors its rich history and ongoing role in shaping our community's future, done this 25th day of February 2025 in Burnley County, New Mexico.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Sayers, you may have a statement.
Yes. So on behalf of the city-county library advisory board, I do want to thank you for this proclamation. We have 19 branches in the system, of which three of the branches are targeted outside the corporate limits. So we have our North Valley Branch, we have our East Mountain Branch, and we have our South Valley Branch. And they... The system is very important, and we also... Well, you'll be hearing more about it as the operating budget and the capital budget goes forward, but we do know that also our libraries are part now of the system of really providing places for people when it's really hot and it's really cold and there's no place else to go, and they go to the libraries. My experience started at Old Main at Edith and Central when I was about eight years old, and I got my own little library card that I think they would stamp it. But in any event, I'm sure everybody in the room tonight just knows how important our public libraries are. So again, thank you, Burnley County, and excuse me, I should have gone through the chair. I stuttered. Mr. Chair and Commissioner, but thank you for recognizing this event. And March 22nd is the 100th anniversary, the 1925 opening of the original library. And all of you are pleased, invited to come and enjoy that very historic building at the corner of Central and Edith. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sayers. Come on up.
And I wanted to just make one quick comment on this item. I think it's important to note that this commission has doubled down, literally, on our support for libraries. In our recent bond package, we doubled the amount of funding that we provide to our library system for materials and acquisitions, and for the first time, we also included separate funding for those libraries located only in the county areas. I believe that was half a million dollars that was dedicated to those libraries. So we have recognized the value of our library system, literally putting additional resources into that, and thank you to my colleagues on the commission who have steadfastly supported our libraries. All right, and I wanted to acknowledge one other group that's in the room here today. We have a lot of first responders in the room, a lot of folks with our Burnley County Fire Rescue Group. They're all here, I presume, for an item later on in the agenda, but just wanted to give an acknowledgement and a thank you to you all for your service and for being here in the room with us. And we also have some folks from the Sheriff's Department, and I think I saw somebody from Animal Care, so really appreciate you all being in the room here with us. All right, Commissioner Benson, I believe you have the honor of doing the APS Selfless Senior Recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And would Ms. Birch and Ms. Barnhill come up, as well as if you're being recognized as a selfless senior tonight, could you please come up to the podium? Thank you all. Thank you all for being here, and you're up here because you're being recognized tonight. So I've got two recognitions to offer. One is to Frank Frost, who came up with the idea for Selfless Seniors. Have you all had your pictures taken by Frank Frost already? Yeah? Yep, good. My kids have too. Okay. Certificate of Recognition. Oh, and Mr. Frost, for the audience, is not here tonight. But this is given to Frank Frost, Selfless Seniors, in recognition of your vision and unwavering commitment to establishing and sustaining the Selfless Seniors Program with Albuquerque Public Schools. Seventeen years ago, you presented APS with a thoughtful initiative to honor high school students who dedicate themselves to serving meaningful causes and supporting those in need within their community. Since its inception, Frank Frost Photography has generously contributed by providing portraits and images for the program. This partnership has allowed Albuquerque Public Schools to highlight these remarkable students across the district. Their portraits are proudly displayed in schools, local businesses, and the Albuquerque International Sunport, inspiring people to embrace the spirit of selfless service. Your dedication exemplifies the philanthropic values of the Burnley County community and continues to motivate students and citizens each year to follow these inspiring examples of community service, presented this day, February 25th, 2025. Now, to you guys, who this is really about. And I just want to say, the whole concept that Frank came up with, with Selfless Seniors, I just love, and so does the community. They're the... And I speak about you all. You know, there's a lot of kids in high school, they get a lot of attention, and maybe they dominate a sport, or, you know, some club, or crowning at a dance. And that's great, and that's important, but that's not what this is about. And some of you may have already done that, but that's not what makes you special. What makes you special is giving of yourselves and making others more important than yourselves. And so, I don't know you, but I'm proud of you, and I'm glad you're up here. And there's a lot of people who think very highly of you all. So I'm going to read this. Now, this is a little different. Each of you got a certificate addressed to you specifically. I'm going to read one, and then I'll list all your names. But it will be... What I'm reading is the same letter of recognition that you each received, so this will be... This will sound like I'm addressing one individual, but I'm addressing all of you. This Certificate of Recognition, given to APS 2025 Selfless Seniors. A distinguished senior from Albuquerque, I'm sorry, Albuquerque Public Schools, recognized in 2025 for their exceptional commitment to community service, kindness, and inspiring their peers, has made a meaningful and positive impact on the community. As a selfless senior, you embody the values of selfless dedication, contributing your time and your energy to benefit others without seeking recognition. Your efforts, along with those of your peers, have created profound and unique positive changes within the community. Your service exemplifies the philanthropic spirit of Albuquerque Public School students, inspiring all citizens to emulate your example of kindness and community engagement. We extend our heartfelt gratitude for your unwavering dedication to the well-being of Burnley County, presented this day, February 25th, 2025. I'm going to read each of your names and the school you're from. When I read your name, can you just raise your hand? Kaylee Shelton, Albuquerque High School. Leona Belmonte, Attrisco Heritage Academy. Ryan Ramirez, Siebel High School. Jasmine Montoya, Del Norte. Charles Epp, El Dorado. Felipe Hernandez, Highland High School. Clay Say from La Cueva. Maddie Espinoza, Monzano. Amadi Solomon Yule, New Mexico Futures. Danny Figueroa, Next Gen. Robert Mendoza, Rio Grande. Eli Crowley, Sandia. Alicia Padilla, Valley. Kylan Montoya, Volcano Vista. Noah Chavez, West Mesa. And Frank Frost, from Frank Frost Photography. Thank you so much. And I also want to say, if you're competing for like a, you know, a trophy or something, you have a good idea that you're in the running at least. It shouldn't be a surprise if you win it or get second place or third place. It shouldn't be a surprise to you. It's a surprise to all these folks, which is the beautiful thing about this award, is that it's awarded to them because you're not thinking about yourselves. So keep it up, keep kicking butt. You're seniors, you're about to go on, graduate high school, and just keep doing this, keep being you, and make the world a better place. And if you have any words, I'd love... We'd love to hear it.
Thank you, Chair Olivas. Commissioner Benson, thank you, Commissioners and citizens. I'm Shannon Barnhill, the humble executive director of the APS Education Foundation, who has the opportunity to work with Frank on this amazing recognition and get to be able to meet these most incredible soon-to-be graduates of Albuquerque Public Schools. I'm also here with one of our student board members of the foundation. His name is Henry Newcomb. He is with Attrisco Heritage, and he's also going to say a few words with me. You so eloquently said so many wonderful things, so I will try and keep ours short, but we've been celebrating this for 17 years, and Frank was right. There are some amazing, incredible students that are doing just such impactful things here in Albuquerque, and they're not being noticed because they're selfless. And if you can tell by the way they're standing so humbly up here and so quietly, it's because they are truly selfless. Selfless, sorry. You guys are not selfish at all. So I just wanted to say that we tell each class of Selfless Seniors that they are actually representing their respective schools, but they're also representing the students, they're underclassmen. They're also representing middle school students. They're also representing elementary school students. They're setting the parameters and the bar for others to follow in their footsteps. And so I am going to hand this over to Henry, and he's going to finish.
As Ms. Barnhill said, we tell them that they represent the entire school district. They represent the students. They represent the middle schoolers. They represent the elementary schoolers, and inspire acts of selflessness as they have committed themselves. We now tell them that because of this proclamation, they can represent Burnley County in this generous spirit, and remind us all that we can make time to give to those in need, spearhead an important cause, give voice to the voiceless, and in that spirit, make our county a better place.
So thank you. We're very proud of you.
Thank you so much. And we'd love to have a picture with you if you could come up.
Go ahead and come up front. I'll take your picture. Okay. I got it. It's all right. Squeeze. Okay.
how wonderful it is to have so many terrific young people that represent the best parts of our community in the room with us today, and it's wonderful to start this meeting out with you, and just want to wish you nothing but the best, and thank you for being here and for what you do for our community. All right, that takes us on to our public comments section. Each person has two minutes, and you'll be alerted to your remaining time. When your name is called, please make your way to the podium if you're speaking in person. Before making your statements, please state your name for the record. To maintain order and decorum and in spirit of professionalism and respect for everyone present, the speakers must adhere to the two-minute time limit. If the conduct of the presenter violates the rules, they may be subject to removal. Saetani, please announce the names.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. So we have 12, 10 speaker today. I will start with the in-person. First, I will call Don Schrader, then Paul Walton, then Theodore Igueve.
Don Schrader. I am 79. If I would die tonight of natural causes, and if you know someone 95 who smokes, drinks booze and sodas, eats crap, do not sink my healthy, raw plant foods. No cigarettes, no booze, no sodas. My miles of walking, my sunbathing, and good sleep have not helped me. If I had not stopped ice cream, cake, cookies, candy, meat, dairy, cooked food many years ago, I would have been fat and diabetic now, or I would have suffered and died years ago. Every day, I work to be healthy and to feel good until I die, whether at 79 or 100. We can usually prevent suffering months and years before we die by living healthy. I absolutely oppose the use of the dangerous poison weed killer, Roundup, glyphosate. Watch the documentary, No Other Land, tomorrow and Thursday at the Gill Theater on Central, 3:45 or 8:15 p.m. A Palestinian activist and Israeli journalist together expose and damn the Israeli and U.S. government's evil persecution and mass murder of the Palestinian people. No Other Land at the Gill Theater tomorrow and Thursday, 3:45 or 8:15 p.m.
Thank you, Mr. Schrader.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, my name's Paul Walton. I'm with County Fire. I've been with County Fire for almost 17 years now, and I've been working on this medical cannabis project for about two and a half years. Studies show that cannabis is safer, less addictive than alcohol, tobacco, and opiates. It has significantly reduced opiate and alcohol use... They have significantly reduced opiate and alcohol use in states with legal cannabis. I've talked with larger fire departments that have removed cannabis from drug testing policy. They have not had any cannabis impairment issues. They've seen a reduction in alcohol-related policy or issues, reported improved mental health, and have not lost any state or federal funding. I've talked with state and federal agencies, reviewed their policies related to drug testing. There is no state or federal regulation or laws requiring random drug testing on firefighters or ambulance drivers. The IFF Union has presented all this information to the county only to meet dismissal and continued resistance. Working together would be a more effective and productive way to reach a common goal. I hope that the county admin will be more open-minded, engaged in the future in these topics. Allowing firefighters access to off-duty medical cannabis can significantly reduce work-related injuries. It can result in better mental and physical health, a safer work environment and improved home life. Off-duty medical cannabis would not pose a threat to efficient and safe fire productive, fire department operations, would save the county money in healthcare costs, boost morale, help with burnout, and help reduce suffering a lot of firefighters endure. The firefighter sacrificed a lot and should be allowed the same freedoms and rights as every other New Mexican. Please, I beg of you, this can really help a lot of people. So I appreciate your time and effort in this. Thank you.
If we could please hold applause, I realize that we do wanna to recognize all the speakers, but if we can please hold applause, and I just wanna thank you for being here, Mr. Walton, and for all your advocacy.
Good evening, Mr. Chair Commissioners. My name is Teddy Iguai. I'm Vice President of Albuquerque Area Firefighters. I rise tonight in support of the IFF's memorandum of agreement with Burnaleo County. The merits of medical cannabis are many, but the issue at hand is the budgetary risk. In brief, I must defend our union's position that, in our research, this initiative will have no impact on the budget. Our organization fully vetted these proposals and would never put forward any changes that would cause harm in any way. We appreciate the commission's continued support and thank Madam County Manager for her recommendation of due pass for this MOA. Allow me for a moment to discuss risk from a different perspective in regards to this MOA, as it directly addresses the risk our firefighters face. I am reminded of the risk all firefighters encounter each time the alarm sounds at the firehouse, when they witness things that that will forever haunt them, when they put themselves in harm's way, risking immediate danger to their health and lives. Or as we increasingly discover, when they face significantly higher risk of cancer, post-traumatic stress, and other life-altering and life-threatening conditions. For many, this legal medication can be profoundly helpful. Lastly, I think about the risk my fellow firefighters who serve and have served in the military have taken, when they show me all the medications they take and share with me the suffering they endure. Nightmares, physical pain, insomnia, just to name a few. I asked them, our retired firefighters and veterans, knowing what you know now, would you do it again? Would you take the risk? Without hesitation, all of them say yes. We go through so much together, both on and off the job, and I love all of them dearly. I am proud to support this memorandum for my brothers and sisters. Risk is nothing new to us.
Ursiliano Ortiz, Josez Waller, Billy Joe Lucero.
And if your name has been called and you're later in the list, if you'll make your way forward, just help us move along a little quicker.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, my name is Persiliano Ortiz. I'm a IFF two forty-four union member and captain with Burnaleo County Fire and Rescue. First, I'm here tonight to express my sincere gratitude for the Commissioner's forward-thinking decision to adopt the new drug policy that protects off-duty cannabis use. This is a significant brave first step in ensuring employees have access to medical cannabis, which has been proven as an alternative treatment for PTSD, sleep apnea, chronic pain, and other ailments that come with the job of being a firefighter. For too long, the dedicated public servants have faced potential termination for choices they make in their personal time, choices that have no bearing on their job performance. Those outdated policies created unnecessary stress and potentially drove away talented individuals who contribute so much to the career. More importantly, it recognizes the fundamental right of workers to privacy in their personal lives. It affirms that the county values its employees for their skills, their dedication, and their contributions to the community. That in turn will benefit the county with increased morale and a stronger workforce. Your vote tonight recognizes the evolving landscape surrounding cannabis. Other departments have adopted similar off-duty cannabis policies that only require reasonable suspicion testing, departments like FDNY, Pittsburgh, and Phoenix, none of which have lost any federal funding or fully compliant with federal regulations like the Drug-Free Workplace Act and U.S. DOT. Our committee has fully vetted budgetary risks and given Mexico's DOT ambiguity on this issue. There is low risk to the county. I believe a drug-free workplace and zero tolerance for impairment is our common goal. Now I urge the Commissioner and Madam County Manager to swiftly approve the MOU. Your action will solidify the message of compassion and respect you have championed for. Thank you.
Commissioners, Chairman, hello, my name is Josez Waller. I'm a captain and paramedic with Burnaleo County Fire Rescue and have served this community for over sixteen years now. Before this, I've served as a helicopter gunner in the United States Air Force with tours to Iraq and Afghanistan. I also served in the Metropolitan Air Support Unit as a rescue specialist with Captain Matt Keen. I know without a doubt that he'd be here in solidarity with us, speaking today on the issue I'd like to bring to your attention, medical cannabis. First, I'd like to acknowledge the courage displayed by the Burnaleo County Commissioners in unanimously passing Resolution seven point four A amendments to drug and alcohol free workplace in regards to cannabis. I truly believe Burnaleo County is paving the way for the future for the state and this country, just like other cities and counties across this nation have already done. Under state law, cannabis is treated the same as any other medicine one would take. It is only equitable that first responders are afforded these same rights. Like said before, the cities of New York, Philadelphia, Phoenix, and many other municipalities have successfully implemented similar cannabis policies for first responders. I have no question that Burnaleo County will remain a drug-free workplace and one of the best places to be employed with a proposed policy where reasonable suspicion testing will continue to be implemented. In fact, I believe the education and added responsibility coming from this change will only strengthen the drug-free environment Burnaleo County provides its employees and the public. The resolution was signed and the direction is clear. We urge the County Manager to enact the resolution bravely signed by this commission and policy that has been collaboratively formed by H.R. and the local two forty-four representatives. Burnaleo County is on the cusp of implementing historic policy that not only follows our state laws, but is an example for other counties and cities across New Mexico and this great nation. Thank you, and with that, a bit my time.
Good evening Commissioners, my name is Billy Lucero. I'm a blue-collar member of AFSCME Council eighteen, Local one-four-six-one. I'm an employee with Parks, Recreation and Open Space. I'm a park maintenance worker three with land management. My duties include mechanically removing weeds, some call this weed pulling, during the growing season. I'm here to testify on behalf of myself and my fellow employees that mechanically weeding is hard labor and time-consuming. It is extremely dangerous when mechanically weeding alongside busy high-speed roadways and medians. I'm here tonight to humbly and respectfully ask the commission to consider passing the resolution brought forth that would allow the extension of glyphosate moratorium. The resolution would allow the spot use of glyphosate on concrete hardscapes, landscapes such as road intersections, and high-speed roadway medians. I am licensed by the New Mexico Department of Agriculture, NMDA, as well as some of my fellow employees to safely apply herbicides and pesticides to effectively control weed and pests in our parks and open space areas. Speaking as a union maintenance worker, approval of the resolution allowing spot use of glyphosate would allow and help make our efforts more effective and efficient for controlling weeds. And as an herbicide applicator for Burnaleo County Parks Recs, Park, County Parks Recreation Open Space, safety precautions and proper PPE are always put first when applying herbicides. Approval of the resolution would also allow myself and fellow employees more time to maintain irrigation systems, athletic fields, parks, playgrounds, and open spaces where children and adults play and get together. Approval of the resolution will also help myself and fellow employees to operate safely near busy high-speed roadways and medians. In conclusion, I would like to thank you Commissioners for your time and consideration in this matter. Lastly, what I like, I would like to ask for favorable consideration of limited spot use of glyphosate. Thank you guys for your time. Thank you.
Next is Peggy Norton, Stephen Cordova, Bobby Egan.
Good evening, Chair Olivas and Commissioners. I know you gave a statement about a two-minute limit. I'm on the steering committee for the resolution. I had a one-minute introduction about how this resolution came about. If I could have three minutes?
If you wanna go ahead and get started, and then if Commissioners have follow-up questions or something like that, then.
Okay. The glyphosate moratorium required B.C. pros to write a plan for implementation of the elimination of usage on all properties by April thirtieth, twenty-twenty. This process was restarted in December twenty-twenty-four. After a rocky start, the committee, of which I was a part, produced the twenty-twenty-five glyphosate resolution, which extended the moratorium, allowed use for one year of glyphosate in certain situations, and established guidelines for collecting data to write the integrated vegetation management and maintenance plan. My concerns, as late as last Friday, were addressed in the final resolution. Thank you to Margarita, Donette, M., Sue, and others on the committee, and I look forward to continued community engagement in producing that plan. This does not eliminate concerns with the risks of using glyphosate. To reduce future litigation risk, Bayer has transferred, transitioned the U.S. residential market to new formulations that have different active ingredients. As recently as December seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four, a half-page ad appeared in USA Today advising Roundup users that they could be eligible for compensation. An Arizona State University research team found that glyphosate exposure leads to lasting damage to the brain and neurodegenerative risks. The International Federation of Gynecology and Obstetrics called for a full global phase-out of glyphosate based on the precautionary principle.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to allow Ms. Norton to continue.
Okay.
Thank you. When an activity raises threats of harm to human health or the environment, precautionary measures should be taken even if some cause-and-effect relationships are not fully established scientifically. Glyphosate threatens bee populations and has been found to kill birds, fish, amphibians, and soil microorganisms. Many cities, states, and countries have a ban or restricted use. Our neighbor city, Las Cruces, has banned glyphosate since two thousand nineteen, and we look forward to communication regarding their experience. The community engagement that produced the Candelaria Nature Preserve Management Plan was a result of neighborhood reaction to spraying of glyphosate. Toads have still not returned. So I do wanna reiterate that we look forward to continued community engagement, and I appreciate the responses to our concerns that are reflected in the resolution.
Ms. Norton, I have a question for you, actually.
Okay.
So are you in, you are in favor of what is before us tonight, but you're expressing, you know, your support of limited use?
Supporting limited use temporarily. Until we write a management plan, which I hope will reflect alternatives to that.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, what was the speaker's name?
Commissioner Benson. Peggy Norton. Sorry, he's just asking for your name.
Chair Commissioners, my name is Stephen Cordova. I'm the IFF Local Two Forty-four Chief Steward on the county side. I'm just here to thank everybody for their work on this MOU and coming to the vote tonight. So I'd like to thank the work of Madam County Manager Cindy Chavez, County Attorney Ken Martinez, and the work of Don Hill and Lena Rudolph as well. And then secondly, just finding out that it was Chief Perez's birthday. I'd like to express a happy birthday to him, thank him for his seven years of leadership in being not only the Deputy County Manager of Public Safety, but also leading our fire department. We've now become one of the largest fire departments in the state of New Mexico. And with that comes investment, and you guys have expressed your support of us, and we thank you for that continued support and investment in our fire and rescue. Thanks. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I've been asked to sit in for the chair. He's just taking a break, so please, continue.
My name is Bobby Egan. I'm a paramedic with the county. I just wanted to thank you all tonight, the whole commission, for your support on this three-year project of ours. To not just thank you on behalf of IFF two forty-four, but to thank you from our families and loved ones. This has been a health initiative for us, a mental health initiative with ramifications that can be hard to grasp right now, but with the potential to have a ripple effect throughout the state. We've spoken with fire departments from around the country, from Phoenix to FDNY, who can attest to the benefits of such an initiative. I'd plan to explain all the reasons why you should vote yes for the MOU tonight, but you've already heard our concerns, our pleas asking for rights, and you voted twice unanimously in favor, so I just wanted to show my gratitude. We've had to overcome some hurdles along the way, some from unexpected places, but it's been your support in this initiative that has made it possible. Most importantly, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Chair, for taking the time to hear us, truly hear us, and support us throughout the process. By approving this MOU and allowing this medication, you are truly saving lives. As a paramedic, it is my job to be a patient advocate, to do what is best for my patient. Thank you for being an advocate for us and investing your faith in our help. This investment will pay dividends for many years to come. Thank you.
We are moving to our online speaker, Ms. Ward.
Ms. Ward?
Mr. Chair, our Zoom link has expired, so we're trying to reconnect.
Okay. Was there anyone else in the room that signed up for public comment that we didn't call? All right, so we can, we can move on to our approvals here of our minutes, and if we're able to reestablish our link with Ms. Ward, we can put her in here when we have that. So we have two, two minutes to approve. First and foremost, we have our January twenty-eighth administrative meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Baca, second by Commissioner Benson. If we could get a roll call vote, Madam Clerk, please.
Yes, Chair Olivas. Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Walt Benson.
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner, or excuse me, Vice Chair Barboah.
Yes.
Chair Olivas.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Passes five-zero, and then that takes us to item B. I'll make a motion to approve the February eleventh, twenty-twenty-five administrative meeting minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Baca. Seeing no discussion, if we could get a roll call vote, please.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Benson.
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboah.
Yes.
Chair Olivas.
Yes.
Thank you.
Passes on a five-zero vote. Okay, do we have Ms. Ward?
We do.
All right. Ms. Ward, you have two minutes.
Hello?
We can hear you. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Am I audible?
Yes, we can hear you.
Mr. Chairman. Okay, great. I'm starting. Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners, Bayer has settled thousands of claims over the carcinogenicity of glyphosate, ten billion dollars to date. The EPA withdrew its interim decision on the registration review of glyphosate in twenty twenty-two after failing to determine health effects of glyphosate. Evidence that glyphosate harms human health has been mounting. Recent studies indicate reduced birth weight and increased infant mortality in populations exposed to upstream or upwind intense glyphosate use. There is evidence that indirect disposal exposure to herbicides via contaminated water increases the risk of childhood leukemias. There have been calls for action ranging from a rigorous review of safety standards and assessments for glyphosate to a global phase-out of its use. Claims by Bayer and Monsanto that glyphosate is safe for general use lack credibility when internal documents that became known as the Monsanto Papers revealed a coordinated effort to attack and discredit researchers and general journalists who published findings that raised questions about the safety of glyphosate and a well-funded plan to produce literature and opinions supporting safety claims by Monsanto. Previous Commissioners unanimously ended glyphosate use on county properties. The pandemic interrupted work on a vegetative vegetation management plan. You can support continuing this work without reintroducing glyphosate. However, county staff have shared challenges regarding weed control. If you see the twenty twenty-five resolution as a reasonable compromise and adopt the resolution, please recognize that glyphosate is not a long-term solution to weed control. Thank you.
Thank you very much, much, uh, Ms. Ward. And I do want to acknowledge that we did receive uh, several written public comments through our staff um, throughout the day, the last couple of days on this issue and others, and I want to thank folks for submitting their thoughts in that form as well. So thank you to all of our public commenters this evening. All right, so I'm gonna read three public statements into the record. I'm sorry, you're all gonna have to listen to me read things for so long here, um, but as we normally have to do after a closed meeting, and I think that the final statement will make clear what the other two statements are about. Uh, so, first off, I offer the following closed sta- following statement regarding the closed meeting held Wednesday, February twelfth, twenty twenty-five at four P M. Only those items described on the published notice and agenda for the closed meeting held on February twelfth, twenty twenty-five were discussed at the closed meeting. I need a motion for approval of this statement. It will become part of the minutes of this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion from Commissioner Baca, Commissioner Barbara Baca, and a second for Vice Chair Barboah. And uh, if we could get a roll call vote for adoption.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboah.
Yes.
Chair Olivas.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That passes five zero. Uh, the second closed meeting statement, I move that the contract attorney be authorized to proceed with the matters discussed in the closed meeting held on Wednesday, February twelfth, twenty twenty-five, within the parameters set by this commission to include matters published in the closed meeting agenda. I need a second.
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Barbara Baca. Seconds, uh, and if we could get a roll call vote.
Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboah.
Yes.
Chair Olivas.
Yes.
So called.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That passes on five-zero vote. Okay, last statement here that I think will make clear what those other two are about. On behalf of the Burnleyo County Board of Commissioners, I make the following statement. The Burnleyo County Code of Conduct Ordinance declares in its purpose that, quote, "The proper operation of democratic government requires that candidates, elected officials, employees, and volunteers of local governments be independent, impartial, and responsible to the people, that public office or the pursuit of public office not be used for personal gains, and that the public have confidence in the integrity of its government. The purpose of this division is to establish standards of conduct for all candidates for elected office and public servants by setting forth those acts or actions which are incompatible with the best interests of the county." End quote. The commission is directing our independent counsel to file a complaint on behalf of the Board of Commissioners for consideration by the Burnleyo County Code of Conduct Review Board. This complaint is filed against Linda Stover, the former county clerk. From the County Code of Ordinances, Chapter Two, Article Two, Division Four, Section Two dash one thirty-seven, which states, "No former elected official shall accept or enter into any arrangement or agreement for remuneration with the county for consultant work, part-time, or full-time employment in any capacity for a period of twelve months after leaving office." Ms. Stover accepted a full-time position, a full-time paid position with the county on January first, twenty twenty-five, after leaving office on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. The Code of Conduct has in place a dispute resolution process through which the Code of Conduct Review Board, through the Code of Conduct Review Board. The Board of Commissioners endeavors to resolve this matter through the process for Code of Conduct violations to give effect to the purpose of this provision and the Code of Conduct as a whole. We have great faith in our Code of Conduct Review Board and the ability of this board to adjudicate this matter and protect and safeguard the public trust which we all serve. And that is the end of my statement. Uh, I would make a motion to enter that into the record of the meeting.
Second.
And if we could get a roll call vote.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, could we discuss?
Absolutely, Commissioner.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Um, I just wanted to clarify that the um, the motion at hand, uh, referring to the uh, commis- the county ordinance is, stands in opposition to state law. And so, um, it'll be state law that I'll be referring to when I place my vote. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other Commissioners wishing to to comment here? Seeing none, if we could get a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Benson.
No.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboah.
Yes.
Chair Olivas.
Yes.
So called.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and that passes on a four-to-one vote. All right, our next item of business is item eight. This is approval of our consent agenda, and as uh, as we noted earlier, we did remove item A. That'll be heard later for uh, for kind of a technical change to that. Uh, so, Madam Clerk, if you could please provide resolution numbers for items eight C, eight F, and eight G?
Yes, Mr. Chair. For item eight C, FR twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three, eight F, AR twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four, and eight G is AR twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Uh, the consent agenda has been published and made available to the public. Therefore, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from the chair and a second from Commissioner Barbara Baca. Seeing no discussion, Madam Clerk, if we could get a roll call vote?
Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Benson.
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboah.
Yes.
Chair Olivas.
Yes.
So called.
Passes on a five-zero vote. And I will take just a very brief point of privilege to point out that our work at the Los Vasinos Community Center is continuing through this consent agenda, and just want to express my appreciation to the folks in our Parks and Recreation Department and our County Manager's Office for continuing to prioritize that project. All right, item nine is adoption of ordinances. We have one of these this evening for economic development, a PRB ordinance for the Tierra Linda Apartments. Madam Clerk, could you please provide an ordinance number?
Yes, sir. For item item nine A, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eleven.
Thank you very much, and we will now convene a public hearing on this item as we normally do. Do we have anyone sign up to speak?
Mr. Chair, we do not. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And with that, we have Executive Development Officer Marcos Gonzalez to present.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the Economic Development Staff request approval for the adoption of the ordinance for the Tierra Linda Apartments, which will be a newly constructed two-hundred-and-forty-unit multifamily affordable housing complex. Uh, this ordinance will provide tax exemption for the affordable housing, and in turn, D B G properties will maintain affordability for the housing units throughout the lease term. I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions from the board? Commissioner Frank Baca, you're also sponsoring the item.
Um, Mr. Chair, um, Mr. Gonzalez. In regards to, I think, major concern I have in regards to projects of this nature, just in general, not so much a specific project, but but I think the intention is important and valuable. But what I always concern myself with is the enforceability of the provisions that ensure or will ensure that these units continue to be made available to those that are intended to, which I believe is at the sixty percent or below of medium income. And I wonder if you could just help me understand that and explain that a little bit in terms of not just the next few years, but the next, I mean, we're talking about thirty-five years if I'm not mistaken.
Uh, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Frank Baca, the um, the developer will also provide us reports as to the affordability that is there, but they also provide these reports to the Mortgage Finance Authority, or Housing New Mexico Now, and to HUD, and to even their tax credit investors as to um, the affordability and to who's actually in those units. On the uh, phone on Zoom, we actually have Eric Grodal. He can speak to the auditing process and what they do to actually comply with um, those efforts as well.
Eric, did you want to have Mr. Grodal speak? Okay.
Yeah.
Hi there. Eric's here. Can can you guys hear me?
Yes, we got you.
Hi. Sorry about that. Marcos, thanks for the introduction, and uh, members of the commission, thank you for for hearing us today. Uh, I think Marcos did a good job of explaining it. I would, and I appreciate the question. Just a few points of co- uh, context here. The the low-income housing tax credit program is designed by its nature to be kind of a long-term hold program. So every deal that we do uh, is a minimum fifteen-year hold, but we have stuff that we've built there from twenty-five, thirty years ago. Um, so we live with the asset or the development, um, and during that time, make several representations on how we comply with the affordability of that. When we go, uh, when we close the project and the financing, we go under contract with a Lura, which is a land use restriction agreement that restricts the affordability for a period, as you said, of thirty or thirty-five years. Um, every year, MFA comes out and performs an audit of the income requirements for each individual tenant. I, as the developer, also make a representation to our limited partner, um, that we maintain the project in compliance uh, for the term of their hold, which is at least fifteen years. We hire our own independent compliance consultant uh, who reviews the files. This is a very highly regulated space with within the IRS to make sure that all these different um, groups oversee the project and affordability. The other thing I I want to point out is that in the event that we were not able to perform or something was caught in an audit, um, we would be, the credits on the on the development would actually, we would have to repay them, and we provide a guarantee to our partner on that. And the other thing is that the Lura Land Use Restriction Agreement runs with the land, but not me. So if I went bankrupt uh, or messed something up and somebody else came and took over the property, it runs with the land and stays affordable, um, despite whether or not I'm there. So hopefully that helps answer the question.
Commissioner Frank Baca, are you?
No, thank you. If I may just, I appreciate that information. Um, and, you know, it sounds like there are several safeguards in place, or many in writing, but I just keep thinking in terms of the practical aspect of these and and the audits that are prepared on an annual basis, I presume they're sent to various entities, including our office. Is that is that correct?
Uh, Mr. Chair and Frank Baca, our audit pieces that we do, we send to the State Board of Finance.
And I'm sorry, didn't quite understand that.
To the the information that we collect is from the State Board of of Finance, and then the uh, for if something were to come up, uh, Housing New Mexico would alert us as well if um, there was non-compliance with the uh, tax credit program.
Okay. So we're not the the first responder, if you will, in terms of verifying the audit reports, is what I hear you say. Is that correct?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Baca, yes, we're not the the first individual, but there's a series of different groups that are all auditing um, the specific project and may checking the same information about the income requirements and then the affordability and maintaining of that affordability as well. So there's a series of uh, protectionary layers to making sure that people in the community are actually getting an affordable uh, complex and with the um, um, standards within the tax credits.
And you've had some experience with this particular group, as I understand. Is that correct?
Uh, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Baca, yes, we've worked with this uh, particular um, development group for over thirteen years, and prior to that, they've had a long relationship with the county as well. Uh, but even before my time here at the county, which is uh, almost going on fourteen years, so.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Uh, Mr. Chair, Mr. Gonzalez. Again, I think the the goal of laudable, obviously I support this, but I just think it's incumbent upon us to make sure that, you know, that there are uh, continued ongoing efforts to um, to oversee compliance, because after all, the intent is to provide housing that is affordable. And so I think anything and everything we can do as an extra layer of protection is something that's really important. So, thank you for your.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Baca, we can have further discussions with Housing New Mexico about uh, reviewing those audit pieces and making sure that we have eyes on those two. So we'll take care of that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Baca, and uh, I'm gonna just say one piece about that, and then Commissioner Barboah, I believe, had her hand up, and then we'll go to Commissioner Barbara Baca. And just wanted to say, I I think you made a terrific point there, Commissioner Baca, about compliance and auditing and making sure that we're actually getting what what is promised on any of these projects with with economic development funds, and I think that's an important part of the conversation that we're actually gonna start tomorrow with with our first uh, our kickoff meeting, talking about our economic development policies and incentives. So I just want to say that. Uh, Vice Chair Barboah. I think we may have had a little issue with the Zoom.
Oh, it says Burnleyo County is the host now. It looks like it's moving along.
We we've got you, Commissioner, if you can hear us.
That way even if.
Madam Vice Chair, are you there? Madam Vice Chair, are you there?
I am. Sorry, I'm gonna also call in so that way hopefully this doesn't happen anymore. I hope we're still on the discussion about the Tierra Linda Apartments.
Yes, Madam Vice Chair, you have the floor.
Thank you. Sorry for the complications. I did have a question also about the sixty percent. It's a, it names sixty percent medium income. Is that medium income in Burnleyo County? Is that medium income in for New Mexico? Is that media income for the United States?
Burnleyo County.
Burnleyo County's median income. Um, and then when it says, um, the four percent low-income housing tax credit is part of a is part of a program, where does that tax come from, if you don't mind sharing more information with me?
The Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program is actually a federal uh, tax credit, so it's it's a federal program that uh, is distributed down to the states and ultimately administered in each state, in the case of New Mexico, by the New Mexico Mortgage and Finance Authority. But the subsidy uh, that helps fund the development of these affordable housing projects is a federal tax credit.
Great. Thank you for that information. And um, I just want to make sure I understand, I have it in front of me, um, the fiscal impact, I just want to make sure I understand what we're paying, what I do, we do have a fiscal impact analysis form in our packets. When um, recurring and non-recurring, can can either you or Marcos help me understand some of the total expenditures and and where it is that the county is contributing and what the low-income tax credit is?
Madam, uh, I'm Mr. Chair and Commissioner Barboah, so the county is contributing the, what would be the uh, tax exemption for the project and what would be for the project, and what we'd be receiving is an annual, um, affordability, uh, annual, uh, maintenance fee of fifty-five thousand. And then the four percent low-income housing tax credits are actually tax credits that the developer sells and provides equity into the project for the construction of the facility.
Okay. And then I do see just, I wonder about this fiscal impact, because it shows the fifty-five, that fifty-five thousand a year annual fees for our maintenance of the building. Um, is that what you said?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Barboa, that, uh, is for, uh, our department for, um, admin.
So that we receive.
Project. So we receive that fee. We don't do any maintenance on the facility. All the maintenance is performed by the developer.
Okay, that makes clearer sense. And, um, yeah, I just had the same thoughts as, um, Commissioner Baca, like, how did we, I live next to Mount V Apartments, they now have like different names, but growing up next to one of the largest at the time, pro, um, you know, low-income housing, um, rentals, um, you know, I, I still live next to them, and I just think at some point, this building has been paid off. And, um, so how, like, wait, uh, did you say, mister, um, that we're, that we can expect at least fifteen years of affordable housing out of this, at that sixty percent medium?
A minimum of thirty, actually.
Okay, and at that sixty percent, that doesn't change?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you so much. Those are all the questions I've had.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Just quickly, and it's kind of a follow-up to, uh, Commissioner Frank Baca, so what is the term of the reporting? I mean, how often do, uh, do we receive those r- reports?
Uh, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Baca, so the, uh, reporting that the county has to do itself with the State Board of Finance is a term of eight years, but then the reporting that the Mortgage Finance Authority does with the developers every year for that thirty-five year term. So it's an annual piece, as well as their, um, investors as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions here on this? Um, I guess I, I just have one, as I was looking at the bar graph here in the packet. Um, it references gross receipts taxes that the county would receive. Um, obviously, this isn't a commercial development, so they're not gonna be generating any gross receipts on site after it's completed, or maybe they are. Um, it, and we are abating some of the gross receipts taxes. Uh, no, we're not. Okay.
Mr. Chair, um, so, uh, this is, it's a cousin to an IRB, so, um, with this, this is only the real property tax exemption. So the development will be paying personal property, so it's the furniture, fixtures, and equipment that are in the facility. They'll be paying taxes on those, and then the GRT from the construction as well, so there won't be any exemption on certain exemption pieces. Versus in an IRB, there's portions of the construction that are exempt, and then, of course, the equipment and the FFNE is exempt from personal property taxes. So for this, this is only purely the dirt in the building, so to speak, that is gonna be exempt.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gonzalez. I think that really helps me understand it, and the difference between the P and the I is, is important in that acronym. So, thank you. Um, Commissioner Frank Baca, you're, uh, did, did you want to make a motion on this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I do move approval.
Okay. Wait a second.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Barbara Baca. Any further discussion? Uh, seeing none, Madam Clerk, if we could get a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboa.
Yes.
Chair, leave us.
Yes.
So called.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. All right, item ten, uh, is adoption of resolutions. Madam Clerk, can you please provide a resolution number for item A?
Item ten A is AR twenty-two-five dash twenty-six.
Thank you very much. Uh, this is presented by our Parks Recreation and Open Space Division, uh, twenty-twenty-five glyphosate use restriction and development of the Integrated Vegetation Management and Maintenance Plan, and, uh, this is County Manager Cindy Chavis to present.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. I just wanted to, before I begin, acknowledge the community members that came out to speak and thank them, and thank them for their participation. I really wanted to also acknowledge our park maintenance workers, both for speaking and for being here. Thank you very, very much for the good work that you do every day. So I'm here to introduce the agenda item for twenty-twenty-five glyphosate use restriction and development of the Integrated Vegetation Management and Maintenance Plan Resolution. Burnley County Parks Recreation and Open Space is requesting that the board approve the re, uh, uh, the board's approval, I'm sorry, to rescind the current glyphosate moratorium, AR twenty-nineteen dash forty-four, and replace it with this resolution that will extend the time for one year to complete the development of the Integrated Vegetation Management and Maintenance Plan, and will authorize temporary spot use of glyphosate for invasive weed management in hazardous and high-need areas for one year while we develop the long-term sustainable weed management solutions. I'd like to have staff, I think, uh, Callie Bronson will give a presentation, and she's gonna detail the resolution. She is with the Natural Resources Section Technical Services of Public Works, and the mission of the Natural Resources Services Section is to be a steward for Burnley County's natural resources, including providing internal technical consulting on environmental matters to other county departments. We also have a number of sub- subject matter experts from many of our departments here that will answer questions. I am gonna ask, um, the commission if we could make sure that we get through the entire presentation before we go to questions, and mostly because I want to see how many of the questions are answered in the presentation. So, welcome.
Thank you, um, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, thank you very much for this presentation. Um, I have it up on this computer. Wanna share it? All right. So, um, as, um, Madam County Manager said, I'm Callie Bronson, Natural Resource Services. Um, a- again, as she said, our job is to steward our natural resources within Burnley County, and we also provide technical, um, consulting and advice, um, about environmental matters to other departments within the county. Um, so with that, um, we'll just start with kind of the problem, um, that we've been facing since the twenty-nineteen glyphosate moratorium, Burnley County Land Management stopped using any products containing glyphosate. Um, weed maintenance has primarily relied on mechanical and manual maintenance methods. Um, these landscape methods obviously require more time, um, they require more staff, and so additional positions were made, um, for land management to help fill this new maintenance need. But over the past five years, there's been a very clear increase in weeds and weed complaints from residents. Um, and one of the consequences of that is that the land management staff has not, has had to defer, um, maintenance on some of the high-use parks and athletic fields, um, in order to focus on that weed management. Um, so this resolution asks for an additional time of one year to complete the Integrated Vegetation, um, Management and Maintenance Plan, um, and for the temporary targeted and spot use, and I want to make clear that this is looking at targeted and spot use, not blanket application, of glyphosate in specific areas that include high-hazard and high-need landscapes, while we are working collectively to develop long-term alternatives and strategies for maintenance in Burnley County landscapes. So next, I'm gonna give you just kind of a little history, um, and background. Um, again, the moratorium went into effect in twenty-nineteen, passed the resolution, the resolution was passed in twenty-nineteen, um, and since then, uh, Burnley County Parks Recreation and Open Space has been working with a consultant to develop the Integrated Vegetation Management and Maintenance Plan. However, there were staff changes both within the county and within the consultant, um, and we had the COVID pandemic during this period as well, and so we've seen delay, and, and the, um, Integrated Vegetation Maintenance and Management Plan, um, really stopped, or slowed down between twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-three. And then in twenty-twenty-four, um, Parks Recreation and Open Space re-engaged with this, um, with the Integrated Vegetation Management and Maintenance Plan. It's also IV MMP, if I forget to say the whole thing out. Um, but they re-engaged the steering committee, and since between October and January of this year, October twenty-four and January of this year, there have been four meetings with the steering committee to work on this resolution and gain, um, and gain, gain their input and, um, their buy-in for this. Um, the development of the Integrated Vegetation Management and Maintenance Plan, um, has been and will continue to be informed by collaborators within the county, like Natural Resources, like Public Works, operations of maintenance. Um, it affects multiple departments, not just, um, natural resource, or not just Parks Rec and Open Space. Um, and then additionally, with stakeholders like the New Mexico State University, New Mexico Department of Agriculture, um, and our community advocates, which from, you heard from two of them this evening. Um, so I'm gonna give you an overview now of the development of the Integrated Vegetation Management and Maintenance Plan. Um, it has two primary goals. One, i- it includes an integrated pe- pest management plan, and in the twenty-nineteen, um, resolution, that did require that Parks Rec and Open Space develop, um, an integrated pest management plan. Um, they did do that. However, um, the current, this current, um, Integrated Pest Management Plan needs to be expanded a little more to include, um, weed control strategies that are specific to types of weeds, that are specific to two, two types of landscapes. It just needs to, it needs a little more detail in it so that we can really, um, target these weeds and target these invasive species in a manner that's sustainable. Um, what an Integrated Pest Management Plan does, it's an approach to management, pest management, and, and, and here we're really talking about invasive plant management, um, that it minimizes risks to people and the environment. It's a decision-making process that's based on the best available science, um, and it uses a combination of strategies, not just a single strategy, but a combination of strategies to affect the best overall outcomes in pest management. Um, the Integrated Vegetation Management and Maintenance Plan also includes, um, landscape design standards and a capital improvement plan for the landscape conversions. Uh, we have a lot of gravel and cobble landscapes, and those have been especially problematic for weed maintenance. These landscape types are generally designed with weed barrier and then two to four inches of gravel on top. And what ends up happening is we get a lot of wind-blown material that comes in, so we get a lot of soils, sediment, and seeds. Um, and then what they end up becoming essentially are weed nurseries. And so we grow lots of weeds, they become, they became sources of seeds as well, and, and they're harder to maintain because of the way they're developed. Um, and so, you know, during the nineteen nineties and through today, we all realized that water conservation in our arid environment was really important, and we really needed to focus on water conservation. And so a lot of landscapes, hi- um, especially high-water use landscapes, were converted to what we call zero-scape landscapes. And these zero-scape landscapes have, um, been really dominated by that gravel-cobble typology, um, for a water conservation landscape. Um, so the goal of the landscape design standards is to create landscapes that are dominated by native plants and to reduce, um, landscapes that require that intense weed management. Those native landscapes will hopefully, you know, squeeze out some of those invasive plants. And once, um, these are established, these landscapes should require less maintenance, uh, once those native plants are allowed to thrive. Um, additionally, a few other things that the Integrated Vegetation Management and Maintenance Plan will include is a summary of peer-reviewed research. So when we're looking for the solutions and the best alternatives, we want to make sure that this is peer-reviewed res- research, um, on weed management, best management practices, including alternatives to pesticides, and, um, collaboration with peer cities. We know other cities have been doing this. We can learn from them. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. So, you know, the goal too is to get more input from our peer cities that have also been doing that, um, to learn from their experiences. And we will continue to collaborate with our stakeholders and our partners, New Mexico State University, the Department of Agriculture, and our community advocates in the steering committee. Um, so I want to give you a q- if this ru- resolution goes forward, moves forward, and once we have a completed Integrated Vegetation and Maintenance and Management Plan, um, it's going to mean, uh, really an overall reduction in the use of pesticides over time, which is aligned with the goals of the original resolution. Um, and with that extended, expanded, um, Integrated Pest Management Plan that we just, that I discussed, um, that uses a combination of strategies for weed management, our weed management should be more effective and less labor and chemically intensive. Um, additional benefits include cost savings, um, improved staff and public safety in high-hazard areas, decrease, a decrease in invasive weed populations, and increase in native plants and wildlife habitat while realizing water conservation and stormwater quality benefits. Um, I do want to point out, it's really important to understand that non-native and invasive weeds don't have natural predators here. Um, so they have a lot of detrimental impacts. They don't provide habitat for our wildlife. Um, and, um, they can be, they can be sources of a lot, they can be really detrimental impacts, like sources for fire hazards. They can be toxic to people as well as pets. Many of these invasive plants have toxicity factors, um, and they also have physical hazards and that impact people and pets, and you can think of goat heads and fox tails. Um, those are some of our least favorite, I think. Um, they can foster pests that carry diseases. Um, they can also, um, they really are big source of the loss of biodiversity when they, when they, um, really dominate the landscape, right? So when they dominate that landscape and our native plants and our native habitats, um, are not there, we really are losing a lot of, um, biodiversity. Um, and then, um, they can also adversely impact soil health. A lot of them do things like putting toxins into the soil so that other plants can't go there. They pull all the nutrients in the water out. They make the soil inhospitable for our native plants. Um, and then they'll also, some of the ways that some of them grow can really exacerbate erosion and problems with erosion. So with improvements to weed management, we will have a result of healthier landscapes and a healthier environment overall. Um, and I want to provide one example of what one of our peer cities is doing and how they're managing, um, and how they're managing their invasive species. So the city of Tucson, um, has engaged, um, Tucson Audubon Society. Um, we have a really strong relationship with, um, Tucson, the City of Tucson Storm to Shade Program, which is their green stormwater infrastructure program. Um, and we reached out to them when we were first being engaged, re-engaged this fall, um, in this project, and, um, they pointed us to Tucson Audubon. So you might ask, like, why, why is a, an organization that is focused on birds interested in invasive plant management? Um, and the answer is that when these invasive plants come in and take over the landscapes, they eradicate the beneficial insects and the other food sources that de- that decrease in biodiversity that support our native landscapes and our native wildlife. Um, and, and they are using glyphosate, so why would they use glyphosate when we've heard so many things about it? I think, um, you can go to their website and find out more. I'm just trying to give you a quick synopsis, but I think, you know, that a lot of these chemicals have been used inappropriately, like these big, heavy blanket applications, right? That's what you really hear about, these sort of agricultural, large applications. What we're talking about here is this targeted approach. And so we use it to target individual plants that, and that protects our wild areas, our natural heritage, and health and human safety. Um, this really is a targeted approach, um, that is meant to protect our, our environment and steward our natural resources. Um, the Audubon Society has done expend, extensive research, um, and they have determined that glyphosate is the least toxic to the environment and to the applicators, and the most effective herbicide option available for many invasive plants. Um, and so when it is used correctly, and when we're using in this approach, that, that we are proposing in this targeted, limited-use approach, and as a last, as a last resort, um, when we talk about the Integrated Pest Management, um, plans and programs, we use a lot of other, um, cultural, um, prevention, biological that, that we use before, and the chemical part of that Integrated Pest Management planning is the little, little tiny part of the whole plan of, of a group of, um, strategies that are meant to work together. Um, so finally, I just want to, um, reiterate what we're asking for here, and that is that we're seeking an additional year to finalize that, um, Integrated Vegetation Management and Maintenance Plan, um, that will make weed management at the county more sustainable, safer for staff and residents, and more cost-effective. And if this res- resolution is approved, um, the Burnley County Parks Recreation and Open Space, along with its collaborate, collaborators, will work to fi- finalize the plan within a year, which will include that expanded Integrated Pest Management Plan, um, and landscape design best management practices, as well as a capital improvement plan for landscape conversions, um, continue working towards converting those gravel and cobble landscapes that are so problematic, um, and provide a mid-year progress report, and then followed by, um, presentation of the completed in, Integrated Vegetation Monitoring and Maintenance and Monitoring Plan after that one year. Um, and with that, I will stand for questions.
Thank you so much, Callie. Um, Commissioners-
Commissioners, could you open up the floor for any questions or comments?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Benson.
I think, kind of what stands out is, I think everybody was recognizing that glyphosate is poison, and then by definition isn't, isn't, shouldn't be widely used, just haphazardly. But with any decision, there's no perfect solutions. And so by banning it altogether, it created an additional problem. And in our efforts to conserve water, that's created additional problems as well, and those are weeds. And how do you solve that? Well, right now, we're using manual labor, and that's creating additional problems. And so this is, I think, is a, is just a reasonable step forward. It sounds like the public comment on, from all sides, it sounded like that, that they agreed, Mr. Chair. There's no perfect solutions, just trade-offs. And it seems like this is a reasonable solution for kind of the most effective way to manage our landscapes without harming the community. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Commissioner Benson, Commissioner Barbara Baca, and then Commissioner Frank Baca.
This, this question probably is for the county manager, and it's more of a clarification because it was asked of me before we started. So we are going to be voting on one thing. We are rescinding the existing and then replacing with the resolution because there was a concern that if we rescind and then we don't replace, we will have a problem. So I just want to verify that for the public.
That's correct.
That we will not be, you know, okay. So that's.
Growing wild, no.
Yeah, great. Okay, thanks. A second thing is, and it was, it was said by Ms. Norton, who has been working on this, on this committee, this citizen committee, the importance that I see continuing, and I see it written in here, but I just want to state it publicly, that this community engagement will be a big part of this completion of this, or as we go through this vegetative management plan. We will continue to work with this, this group and our technical experts. Yes?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Baca, Donette Townsend, Deputy County Manager for Community Services. That is absolutely the plan, in engaging, as well as additionally engaging our first responders, like our fire department, to talk about their, bring their expertise to the table around reducing fire hazard, particularly the East Mountains, as a part of this plan. But the committee will stay intact.
Great. And then another question related to that, and again, I think it's for public consumption here, that the importance is, is that this, this vegetative management plan is going to include things like training for, I mean, the problem that you, we set policies, and what we need to make sure is, is that we implement them properly. So if you're saying spot use, that would include training of our staff. We heard an individual come up, and I really get that, that it's dangerous for, to put our folks in the middle of a high-speed thoroughfare on a cobble-treated, you know, median. And so when we say spot use, we're talking about spot use on those kinds of things, and we're going to have to train our staff so that if, if they determine in the field that it's cobble, because I assumed that that was zero-scape with some rock surrounding plant material and things like that. So I just wanted to make sure that, again, for the record, that we, that we state the factual matters of what you're talking about with these, you know, high, what do you call them, high-risk areas, and what that means.
Yeah, so that is correct. And, and that really, a lot of what you're talking about would be part of the Integrated Pest Management planning. And I pulled up one of the extra slides that I had showing what would be included in this. And that's really making sure we have that priority weed species list, so we know what we're targeting. So we also know what native plants are, so we know what we're not targeting. And that is going to mean a lot of training for staff to make sure that they understand what they're targeting, what they're not targeting. A lot of them know a lot of this already, but we want to make sure that they have all the support they need to be able to implement this in a, in a way that's consistent with our vision of moving forward sustainably.
And a follow-up on that, Mr. Chair, is that you said that we were, we will work toward converting gravel and cobble to what? I mean, I guess that's what's, that's the key question.
The crux of it, yes. So the other part of what will be included in this Integrated Vegetation Management and Maintenance Plan are these landscape-designed best management practices. And the purposes of developing these is finding the best way to install these new landscapes that will do the most to reduce the amount of weeds and invasive species. So for example, planting dense native plantings, when you have a lot of dense plants in there, there isn't a lot of room for the invasive species to come in. If we give these native plants the support they need when we originally plant them, they should thrive, and they should help keep out the invasive plants. And so, so that will be part of this process of developing the Integrated Vegetation Management and Maintenance Plan. I don't know how many more times I can say it tonight.
And Mr. Chair, just one final for, for now, just on this line of questions. But that's really important because when we grow and purposefully plan our landscaping that has natural grasses, we know that that can out-compete goat heads, you know, the bad, the bad weeds. So it's really, really an important part of this whole effort. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Frank Baca.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, as some of you may know, I'm a big fan of community engagements. I've kind of said that a couple of times over the couple of months I've been around. And I'm very impressed by what I've heard over the last few weeks in regards to public opinion. I've received emails, text messages, I think phone calls. Impressed by the input from the steering committee, the thoughtful work that, and discussion, dialogue, and very impressed by the presentation by staff here tonight and previously, and providing information, the research. It's a difficult issue, right? It's a tough issue. Nobody likes to think of that we're applying a poison. I get it. And, but, but this is how we address these problems, by this really deep dialogue, discussion, engagement, yeah, input. So, yeah, I just really appreciate the effort that's gone into coming to this point, and I doubt he will support the resolution to amend the previous amendment.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is Commissioner Barbois still with us online? I just wanted to make sure I didn't see.
Yes, I am, and I do have my hand raised.
Okay, I couldn't see it, so go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much, Chair, and members of the committee. And yes, I agree with Commissioner Baca, appreciate the conversation. I did have one question. It seems like folks are pointing to a time when we'll have a plan or something else done, but also to Commissioner Baca's question, right? We have a resolution we're passing, but does that also include, like, when is the plan expected to be done that we're waiting for?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Barbois, the intention is that we have one year to complete the plan. There is a partial effort that we have already embarked on, and this next year will be to really continue that planning and ensure that we have a clear Integrated Pest Management Plan that is expanded to really eliminate, the goal is to eliminate any type of negative impacts on the environment. But we will come to you within, should this resolution be passed, six months to tell you exactly where we're at in the planning process. And then in one year, the final recommendations with that plan would come before the commission.
Thank you very much. I don't have any other questions, Chair.
Okay, thank you, Madam Vice Chair. So I do have a few. So I want to point out, and I realize we have new leadership in the PROS section, in the overall Community Services Division, and many parts of this division, but I do want to point out, just a frustrating part of this is that there has been a four-year delay in action on the direction that was given from the commission. I wasn't, I don't think, I don't know if any of us were on the commission at that, well, I guess Commissioner Benson may be, the vice chair, but most of us were not here at that time when that direction was given. And most of the leadership wasn't here at that time either. So, but I do want to just point out that that's very frustrating, that, you know, direction was given and nothing happened. I realize that COVID did happen in between there, but a lot of other core functions of county government, a lot of projects got done in this section and many others. So I don't, I don't love the excuse that COVID happens, so therefore, and so I commend the leadership, the current leadership, because you're picking it up and you're saying, hey, we got to dust ourselves off and pick this up, admit we didn't get it done, and let's set a new, realistic timeline to, to, to refresh this. And I think you're well on the way to do that. So I want to point that out. I also want to point out, I was reading through the old, the 2019 resolution, and it's not clear to me that this is a ban. The language actually does say that glyphosate will be, only be used as a last result on, a last resort on properties other than those where the moratorium has been fully implemented. It also talks about spot usage during summer months with an increase in the usage of pre-emergence. So I just want to suggest that it's possible that there was a, you know, you guys were maybe more stringent than what the commission had implied, because, again, I wasn't here, but in reading that language, I think there was some flexibility for some of what you're already talking about in there.
Mr. Chair, you are exactly correct on everything you just said. And it's my understanding that the former leadership in the Community Services Division and Parks and Recreation Department, the division instructed Parks to eliminate the use immediately. And thus, that is what they did.
Very fair. And I think that's, you know, overachieving in this case, but that may have had some, some consequences on, you know, downstream. I want to point out that the, the cost savings, there, there is not a, we don't call it a FIR, FAF, a fiscal analysis, I'm sorry, I don't know what that stands for, but there is not a fiscal analysis associated with this. But the presentation does claim a cost savings, but it doesn't claim what the cost savings is. And so I guess I'm, there's nothing we can probably do about this right now. I don't expect there's anyone in the room that can come up here and tell us what the cost savings would be, or the costs, because obviously for buying more chemicals, that's also a cost, but there's less labor maybe.
Mr. Chair, and part of that is going to be looking at that through the planning process, in how much, once we convert landscapes, all of those actions that take place, as you see on the screen, the preventative, cultural, and physical and mechanical approaches. The hope is, as we look at that and work with NMSU to determine the best mix in each areas of the county, because the other side of this is that the county is a big geographic location with very different environments that we have to address. It's not one size fits all by any means. So part of the work that we're going to be doing, and in particular, the wonderful suggestion of Commissioner Barbara Baca, is really trying to look at how we can work with our universities to figure out what the best mix is. And from that, we anticipate that we will find what those cost savings are. Based on historical, prior to the 2019 resolution, the Parks and Recreation Department was spending approximately $50,000 on the chemicals, so it wasn't a huge amount of money. So we are hoping that with elimination of that, we're going to save there, as well as in just human capacity, as we are moving through these landscapes.
I will just, if I could add.
Yes.
I think through the chair, you're adding, you're asking a really important question, which is something that we're working to address, which is how are we making sure that we're consistent as we bring information to you in terms of when we're making a declaration, how we do that. So I hear that feedback, which is separate than what you're, what you're sharing, but we're continuing to work on that.
I really appreciate that, Madam County Manager, and I would say, yeah, it's more of a global issue of making sure that these fiscal impact reports speak globally, you know, what are the costs, what are the benefits, what are the sort of, I know you can't go all the way out, but thinking about lawsuits, those kinds of things, you know, kind of just trying to make sure that every, as much as possible, everything is encapsulated in those. I realize that's, that's a rabbit hole, but. And then a couple other things I wanted to point out, that we talked a lot about community engagement, but I know we have some experts in the department. Colleen is one of them, we have others. And I think engagement is important, but I think education is actually more important because one of the things that we've all become accustomed to is pointing at something and saying, ooh, that's a weed, or, ooh, I don't like the way that looks, that's ugly. And I think part of it is actually educating people that not everything is a weed, and some things are meant, you know, some grasses are meant to be longer, more flowy, more, you know, diverse, those kinds of things. And so it's not just about, I think, asking the public what they want, that's important, but as the experts in the room and the scientists in the field, I think we also need to make sure that this includes an education component too, to make sure that people understand, hey, some of these native landscapes that we're implementing, they're going to look a little bit different, but here's the benefits of those things, less maintenance, more pollinators, less chemicals, all those things. So just a comment that I think that needs to be part of this. And then, kind of the last one is, I am a commercial applicator myself, so I'm pretty experienced in, in what this means, taken a lot of CE hours and done a lot of seminars and stuff, learning about, you know, what, how to manage an Integrated Pest Management Plan, and how to, you know, do the sort of lowest use of all pesticides, but especially herbicides. That's a lot of what we use as herbicides. And so you talked a little bit, I just want to emphasize, defining the target pest is really important. That's like kind of 101 right now in pest management, is we don't do a lot of blanket application of stuff anymore. Everything needs to be targeted. What are you specifically trying to target? Obviously, there's going to be a list. It's going to depend, in the East Mountains, things are different than they are in the Valley, different than they are here at Alvarado. But I think having those targets defined, and then obviously the training piece is really important because you define the targets, and then you teach people how to target. And for example, I don't think you did this intentionally, but you mentioned Roundup and goat heads. Roundup is really ineffective on goat heads, in my experience, because the goat heads are typically able to grow their goat heads before the Roundup actually kills them. And so you get the part that we all really hate, and you get the seeds for next year. So again, it goes back to defining those pests, like an elm, or Bermuda grass, or bindweed, or something like that. I'm sorry, I'm literally getting into the weeds, but we're, we need to be defined in that because there's some things it is not effective on, and I know that for, for staff that are out there, you know, pulling weeds by hand, it's not fun to pull goat heads, but it's actually the most effective way to deal with goat heads because you, they come up very easily, they're usually very large, and one pull will get a big amount of goat heads out of the system. So I think that's, that's basically all I've got. And what I want to suggest is, I think I shared what I'm, what I'm calling a floor sub with, with you all. And I would, you know, if you're prepared to give feedback on it now, I think we could, we could do that, but I would also say that maybe it would be better to defer it and have a more robust conversation on this with this in hand so that everybody has time to think about it. But happy to hear from you all, and obviously the will of the commission on this is where this will go.
Mr. Chair.
I'd like to let them comment first, and then.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the commission. We would, we would definitely like to take a little bit more time to look at the amendments and give feedback on that.
Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What you were talking about, community engagement, kind of hit home. And I think no matter what we come up with, there's going to be people that are unhappy with it. And that just goes with the territory. In my district, and I know probably all of your districts, I get complaints about side of the road weeds. So we go in and mow, and we start getting complaints that they cleared too many weeds, or they trimmed the trees back too much. So then we let them go back out, and people start complaining, there's, they're overgrown. So then we go mow. So no matter what we do, there's going to be people that aren't happy with it. But we try to do our best. We do have experts here that are professionals, that do massive amounts of research, are handling the chemicals themselves, they don't want to get sick, they care about animals, they care about our community, they care about the children. And then we have, we have community experts as well, and we need their input, but not everybody's going to be happy here. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. And if I can just introduce this real quick, the floor sub is what I'm calling it, but we could, we could treat it as amendments if. sub is what I'm calling it. But we could, we could treat it as amendments if we wanted to deal with it tonight, but I do think that might be, you know, premature and with respect to the, the public being able to engage on it. But I think, just to highlight a couple of the key things in here that I'm suggesting, is a little bit more definition on the species, and just sort of a little bit more of a targeted approach, truly. And I will admit to my failings here, I don't know what you all are seeing in the field, or what you want to target specifically. So I put a couple names in here of what I know is probably on your list, but I don't purport to say I know everything that you guys are trying to deal with out there in the field. So I think that's important. And then, a couple of the additions really focus on the actual plan, and sort of what we would receive back as a commission, what kinds of policy guidance we would receive from our experts in the field. And so, you know, one of the things that I would like more information on is what other pesticides are we using as part of that plan? So it's not, I mean, everybody's focused on glyphosate, and from my experience, literally applying these things, that is not the worst chemical that you can use. It's maybe the least bad chemical you can use, even though it's found in like 80% of the food we eat. It is, we think, maybe relatively safe compared to some of these others. So that's one component, is making sure that we get that information. And then another one that I know, you all know, I've talked about this from the beginning, is a list of those high need landscapes, why they're high need landscapes, what your recommended actions for those are. So, you know, some might be bark chips, some might be paving it, some might be re-landscaping the whole thing, and then a prioritization of that list. Like, what do you all recommend are, hey, these are the top projects that we need to do, will get the most, you know, lower environmental impact the most on those. And then the last piece is, this thing about new and renovated projects, and basically just trying to say that we should really be focusing on making sure that anything we invest money into, we don't use any glyphosate, we don't use any herbicides, because it's designed in a way that we really shouldn't have to unless it's a spot use kind of thing. So that's a very brief synopsis of it, but there's a little bit more to digest than that. So if you want to respond, or we can go to Commissioner Baca.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We, we definitely have that feedback, and just need a little bit more time to make sure that we're consulting with the land management team and, and the folks that are out in the field, to make sure that we also have the same information when we're sharing that with you.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Murdock.
Well, that's great. I mean, I'm hearing that a short deferral, you know, might be the best for everyone. I mean, a few weeks ago, when I was speaking with some of my constituents who are in the valley, along Alameda Trail, along, you know, some of these high intensity, and also, you know, badly overgrown with goat heads on the problems on the trails and those kind of things, they were, they were not in the same space coming here, like they did here tonight, saying, we trust you, you've involved us, and we're moving forward. So I would like definitely to give them the opportunity to see this floor amendment before we approve these languages, this language as amendments, Mr. Chair. And then secondarily, let's see, just lost my train of thought on the, on this, the, to get the staff agreeing that, you know, that they want to digest this and then come back with some of the answers, and this may be just great, but both community and staff, I think, and technical experts can weigh in on your amendment. So I would, I would support a deferral. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Baca, we absolutely would not send that out for their input as well.
I think you mean that we would.
No, I mean, we wouldn't, we would definitely send it out, we would not go forward without including their voice.
Madam County Manager?
Thank you very much, Chair. The only thing I wanted to say is, I think as it relates to a realistic timeline, that if we're going back out to the community, to the public, we have to make sure that we're not rushing them, that we're getting their feedback. That was actually one of the challenges with, the reason this took so long, is we had so many fits and starts and didn't build enough trust with the community. And so, so what I would just say, and I'm saying this to the staff, is to be as realistic as possible about both reaching out to the community and then going back through our staff to get their feedback, particularly the line workers. So I'm not sure if you have a date in mind, but I would ask the staff what time you think you need. Again, because I want to be very respectful of the fact that we brought everybody together, you finally were able to work, we were building trust and partnerships. And so what's the timeline that you think is realistic?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Madam County Manager. We would like to have at least 30 days to make sure that we had, we can get people together and do the communicating.
Thank you.
And before we take a motion here, I did want to just, like, commend you guys for, like, what is really some excellent work here, all around. You've already proposed some draft policies, some draft language. And what I hope stands out to you all in the sub, is that there's almost nothing that's struck out. There's like a couple of words, but by and large, it's just adding a few things. So I think it was, this is really close, we could probably pass it today, and it would be okay. I don't, I don't think it would, it would be terrible. But I think we could get to a place, an even better place, and build on the excellent work of your team. And so I don't want you to take this as, you know, we're chewing it up and spinning it out. It's really pretty close, but I think a few tweaks will really take this to the next level and put us in a position where we can tell our constituents that we are doing something really responsible, and that will ultimately be for the better health of our whole community.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I do want to just extend our gratitude to the Natural Resources Section. Without their expertise, we wouldn't have been in this place. And it takes everybody's contribution, but having somewhere, some, a space in the county that is really charged with making sure we're all doing the best for our community when it comes to protecting our natural resources, is such a great benefit, and we are incredibly grateful for that, and for the commission for ensuring that we have that type of checks and balances in our own system. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Murdock.
One last comment. I'm just remembering, someone spoke this evening in public comment about that Las Cruces has a ban on, have you talked with, or maybe take this 30 days as an opportunity to talk to our sister agency down in southern New Mexico and come back with, because I don't know, from what I've seen here yet, what they're doing, so.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Baca, yes, I have spoken with land management staff in Las Cruces. They do have an integrated pest management program in place. They currently do not use glyphosate, I knew I was going to do that one time, no way around it. They currently don't use it, but they also have, they also have a lot of funding to employ a lot of additional staff. They do a lot of contract work for that manual removal of weeds. So there are other ways to do it, but it does, you know, it's a balance of where you're putting your efforts and where you're spending your funding.
So if I could ask one point of clarity from our staff, would, is it March 25th? Is that the next meeting that we'd be looking at?
You would be looking at March 25th, yes.
Okay. So I would make a motion for a deferral till March 25th?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, if you could call a roll.
Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Benson.
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboah.
Yes.
Chair Olivas.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we will see you in exactly one month. Thank you. Okay, next item, I know we got a lot of folks in the room waiting on this one, so this is our approvals. Item A of our Human Resources, the Albuquerque area firefighters, Local 244, MOA related to cannabis policy. And we have County Manager and several of our H, our Human Resources staff available here.
Yes, thank you very much. And I did want to thank the staff, both for the report and the good work that we just heard. So thank you all. Now, we're turning to a motion relative to the new Bernalillo County Drug and Alcohol-Free Workplace Policy. I want to start by thanking our firefighters for joining us and the leadership of the union. Both Miguel and Teddy have been really amazing to work with tonight. Let me start, for those of you who haven't had a chance to read the report, to say that we are, the staff and I are recommending approval of this motion tonight. I was concerned when I heard the first speaker talk about feeling dismissed. That is not our intention, and the staff, Dawn and Lena and our team, worked very hard. I know with your, your team, once we get direction from our commission, we work diligently to fulfill the obligation set forth by them. On December 10th, based on a resolution introduced by Commissioner Olivas, the board approved a final revised policy for the County Drug and Alcohol Workforce Policy. Based on that, the Albuquerque firefighters submitted a proposal for an MOA regarding cannabis testing, so as an opportunity to bring the collective bargaining agreement in line with the county's new policy. Negotiations ensued, and I do just want to thank our staff and the union. I thought they were thoughtful and really working together to find the very best policy for the county to move forward on. The reason this agreement is before us today is that in doing our research, we found inconsistent information coming from the New Mexico Department of Transportation. And therefore, if there is any risk financially, I felt obligated to bring it forward, to sunshine that. I want to say to all of you that I think the risk is very, very low. It's minimal, but we are obligated to be transparent, both with the public and especially with our commission. So the adoption of this MOA may result in the New Mexico Department of Transportation determining that Bernalillo County Fire Ambulances violate their random testing rule for motor carriers. If this occurs, it could result in a loss of revenue that we currently get because as, because we're licensed, we're able to bill for those services. Given the department's ambiguity on this issue, we assessed there was some risk, but we felt the risk was very relatively low, and therefore were recommending approval tonight. If the Department of Transportation were to raise concerns, we would work with the union to get the rules changed so that they are aligned with the direction we're taking. So with that, I'm asking for the support of the commission for this recommendation. And Dawn and Lena are here, and I want to say again, thank you, to answer any questions.
Thank you, Madam County Manager. Commissioners, questions, discussion on this?
I have a comment.
Yes, Commissioner, Vice Chair Barboah.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, commissioners. And thank you, County Manager. I think it's, it is important that we are, you know, we are doing something new. We are embarking on, you know, innovative stuff. I'm so grateful for our firefighters, for our union leadership in, this is a bold move. That's not always easy to take, and I'm glad that we're being thorough on the front end so that we get it right, because we do serve to be a model for our state. As a medical cannabis user, I just want to remind ourselves, I think this is, I'm glad again that we're being thorough, so, because we have to get it right as we keep innovating and bringing new things. One of the pieces that I want to make sure as a survivor of trauma, of violence, of gun violence used against me, and witnessing trauma in, and being a survivor of that, we know, and it should be said, right, that the use of medical marijuana to decrease anxieties, traumas, the negative effects of post-traumatic stress disorder, those have been proven for a long time. Our state has approved first medical recreation, now, first medical use, now recreational. Tonight, we're talking about medical non-on-duty use. And I'm just grateful that we're making these moments. I'm grateful to our chair and our leadership at the unions for making these commitments to a healthier workforce that has to deal with. And, you know, in the number of traumas that I can say that I've experienced, I'm sure it doesn't compare to what most of our firefighters have to deal with on a regular basis. So I just want to say, these are our heroes. They're speaking boldly and proudly for our hero, for our future heroes. And this is a big step towards decreasing the shame and stigma, right? So I'm really proud of their bold move to do that, reduce the shame and stigma around really dealing with things, dealing with our health in a way that doesn't involve illicit drugs, that does not involve alcohol. I've said many times on this that four of my uncles and my father all died from alcohol. And I think that addressed, that poison in our society continues to not be addressed. And many of it is to supplement how people deal with traumas. We, so I'm just thankful for this move. I know that it gets frustrating, and I know that we, and things take time. I'm glad we're being thorough so that we get it right. It could be the true model for their, for our state and for the country. And I really am grateful for everybody's, you know, being really bold and brave. Thank you. I definitely support this movement.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with Commissioner Barboah, and I think it's the right direction we need to be moving in. And I do want to thank County Manager, though, for bringing this, the potential side effects and consequences to our attention. I think the last, the last item took 30 minutes to go over, and that's banning the use of glyphosate. There's, good things can have additional consequences. And so the more of those you can get ahead of, the better. And so, and with that, so thank you for bringing it to our attention, so that we know where we can be aware of. We are charting new territory here, as Commissioner Barboah said. I think it's the right direction. And that's all, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. I wanted to offer, if the union leadership wants to say anything, you know, certainly feel free to come up. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but you all are here, we have so many of your wonderful members here, and we'll give you an opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Just want to echo the gratitude with everybody involved, County Manager, every staff member, every lawyer, every person in your office that put hands on this, that put eyes on this. It's been a long time for our members. It's been a long process. Many of our members, and many of our future members, as it was discussed, are going to be the benefactors of this, of this policy. And like, I would like to echo what, you know, Commissioner Benson said, and whatever comes of this, if there is, you know, any kind of negative, of course, we're going to work in good faith as we always have. We've always offered that, and we will continue to. We do believe this is, you know, chartering new territories, and we really, you know, we really want to thank the sponsor. So Commissioner Olivas, it takes a lot of guts to do something like this. We're trying to get things done like this in the city of Albuquerque, the state legislature, other places in the state, Santa Fe City, Santa Fe County, and we're getting stonewalled at every, every place we go. And I think it just takes courage to do this. And Bernalillo County, I think, is going to end up looking like, going to be looking, look really good for doing this in the long run. I truly believe that. I truly believe that the conversation around medicinal cannabis, specific to the traumas, as Commissioner Barboah explained so eloquently, is, is really big for us. We try to deal with the stigma of behavioral health in the fire service with everything that we can. And this is, this isn't a fix-all. This is just one more tool in the toolbox for our members to address anxiety, PTSD, pain management, sleep deprivation. Every single one of these firefighters does shift work, and every single one of these firefighters has sleep dysregulation. And it's just one more tool in the toolbox. So once again, we appreciate the courage for everybody to be a part of this. Yeah, that's all I got to say. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I would just echo what President Tippmann said. This is a difficult endeavor for everybody involved. Everybody has different roles. I understand that county management has to make sure they take care of the bottom line and things aren't put in jeopardy. But I also want to reiterate that our organization made sure that when we vetted it, that we would never do anything to put the public in jeopardy, or the fire service in jeopardy, and the service that they provide to the community. So I think tonight, we've come to a, basically a resolution, an agreement, that this is something we can do. And I want to reiterate as well, that our union will always work in good faith with county management, with county elected officials, and whatever may present, whether it's something from the DOT, or if it's something in statute that becomes a problem, that we will work in good faith to find the best resolution for that. You have our promise. Thank you.
Thank you so much, gentlemen. I really appreciate all of your members and the leadership being here tonight. I wanted to make a few remarks here. I want to thank our county manager really. thank our county manager really for, you know, she kind of came in in the middle of this, or at, at the end of this, if you will. We had, we had already kind of passed the policy, worked through all of that, and, and she got thrown into this, and she really got to work and, you know, dove into the books and, and looked at this deeply. And throughout the process, she's, she's kept me in the loop, and, and I feel like she has done her level best to, to be an honest broker on this. And so I realize that, that, that at times is, is a little frustrating for, for everybody, because, you know, we want to see this change years ago, frankly, but I, I do think that, that she was doing her best to protect everybody up here and all of your members, because the last thing we want is to have to go to you and say, hey, because of this, we didn't realize, now we're going to have to, you know, we have to cut positions, or we have to cut services, or something like that. I don't think any of us want that, and that's what I think this is, is her doing her level best to make sure that we understand even the very remote risk, and I do believe it is almost an infinitesimal risk, but just being transparent with everybody, and I think that's, that's an important quality and, and something I have, I have deep respect for. But I have deep respect for you all and, and the work that you've done, and everybody in this organization, and Dawn and Lena were right there in the, the line with me as, as we crafted this policy, and our, our folks at County Legal. And really, the county will be, if we pass this tonight, we will be the first organization in the state at a municipal level or county level that is allowing medical cannabis use for a first responder group like this. And I think that really puts us in, in the vanguard in a, in a good way, in a good place, standing behind our people that, that stand up for us. And so, I won't say too much more, but I, I wanted to read just a couple lines from a letter that I received. We all received this letter, from a very thoughtful member of your union, and I think there's just a, a few passages that are really important. So, this is a quote, "This policy change is an opportunity for Burnley County to lead the entire state of New Mexico in supporting their first responders by trusting them to safely and responsibly use something that can offer relief for many ailments they suffer as a direct result of their service and sacrifice to the public." Skipping down a little bit, quote, "A drug-free workplace with zero tolerance for impairment in the workplace is our common goal. We can achieve this together, but there has to be reasonable and fair language to accomplish that goal. Firefighters sacrifice a lot and should be allowed the same freedoms and rights as every other New Mexican. Your firefighters need true leaders to seek compassion and support from the county. Please help protect the protectors." And I think that's truly what we're doing here this evening. So, with that, I'd like to make a motion for approval of the MOU.
Second.
All right. I'll, I'll, I think we had everyone second, maybe. So, any further discussion on this item? All right. Madam Clerk, if we could please get a roll call vote.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboah.
Yes.
Chair Olivas.
Yes.
Thank you.
That passes on a five-zero vote. Congratulations. Thank you all.
And again, a, a special thanks to our county manager, County Legal, and our, our HR staff that have been there to support on this every step of the way. So, thank you.
All right. Next up, we have Economic Development and Amendment to the Maxion American Manufacturing LEEDA Project Terms and Executive Development Officer Marcos Gonzalez to present.
Chair Olivas, members of the commission, the Economic Development Staff recommends approval of the amendment of the Maxion American Manufacturing Project Participation Agreement. The changes to the PPA are due to changing from the, what was supposed to be the construction of a facility at the brownfield, at the greenfield site at Mesa del Sol, will now be a leasing of an existing facility at San Mateo Boulevard near the Balum Fiesta Park. This will allow Maxion to receive a portion of their state LEEDA contribution in connection with the initial phase, which is the assembly of solar panels. The county's GRT share portion will not be part of this deal and is still only limited to the construction of the facility at Mesa del Sol. The PPA will also be amended for an additional year to account for delays that have gone on with the project. With that, I'll stand for any questions, and members from the state Economic Development and the company are here this evening as well.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Open it up for questions or your comments. Commissioner Frank Baca.
Thanks, everybody, for reminding me to turn my mic on. So, and this may have been presented, and I didn't quite get it or understand it, but just a simple explanation for why this move, number one. And number two, what is the significance of it being a brownfield site at the San Mateo address?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Baca, the big pieces of the company's not moving forward at this time with their construction of the manufacturing facility and is choosing, as they've, are reworking their items to start assembly instead of actual the manufacturing of the solar cells, will do assembly of the solar panels themselves first, but in the meantime, they are still investing over $100 million just to refit the facility to make it work for them, and then over $150 million as well of new equipment that will be invested into the facility to assemble the solar panels. And we'll still see a job creation of nearly 300 new jobs at the facility. It's just being called, I believe, the Brownfield Site just because it's an existing facility. They used to be manufacturing for Honeywell and versus a greenfield site, which would be the Mesa del Sol, which is just currently dirt.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that.
Other Commissioners, Commissioner Barboah, sorry, didn't see your hand there.
Hey, thank you so much, Chair. Thank you, Marcos, again, for bringing this. If the, what does this mean to the other Ted? It looked like it's saying it's still on hold, or, I, I guess, please explain to me what happens with the Mesa del Sol project and what happens with this project, and what does the timeline look like?
Sure. Mr. Chair and Commissioner Barboah, so the, the Mesa del Sol site will be on hold for now, currently, but for the Honeywell Site or the existing site, you probably would see just in the first quarter of 2026, actual employees beginning to work at the facility.
Okay, and would you say, Mr. Gonzalez, that this, Director Gonzalez, that this still meets our benefit for county contributions in the same, like, our, if not for, sort of checklist?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Barboah, so at this time, because it's going to be at the existing facility site, there will be no county gross-to-seat taxes that will be shared with the company. That would only take place for the development of the manufacturing facility at Mesa del Sol. So, but just because we are a party to the public participation agreement, we have to amend it, and normally, we give authority to the chair to act on behalf of the commission to amend these administrative items like this, but that was not part of the PPA, so we have to bring it back for the full commission to, to vote on and consider.
Okay. Thank you very much. I have no other further question.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Commissioners, Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Gonzalez, the, from what I understand, this actually gets the ball moving a little quicker. Now, I, and I, my sympathy goes to Maxion for having to adjust and adapt, but it may end up being a better situation, not only for Maxion, but also for Burnley County. You mentioned 300 jobs. Can you, I just want to reiterate, those jobs will be offered to local Burnley County residents or potentially attract new people to Burnley County to experience the wonderful life we have here. But can you tell me kind of what the salary ranges are for those 300 jobs?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Benson, I'll defer to Dan Cohen of the company to speak more precisely for the job pieces.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Benson, thank you very much. Was that headcount table that I shared earlier, shared with the full commission? So, that illustrates by position, the number of headcounts totaling up to 294 persons, and an annual unburdened payroll of $20.8 million and $27 million when the value of the benefits are baked into that total payroll. Did I address your question, Commissioner Benson?
That's, yeah, that's a good, that is, actually, that does answer my question, but it gives me another follow-up question.
Okay.
What's the, what's your average salary of that $20.8 million in salaries? What's kind of the average salary that, of the employee that will be at this new facility?
So I haven't done kind of a global average salary in aggregate for, for all 294 employees, but I, I can easily come back to you with, with that number.
Okay. Do you have a range?
Yeah, so the, the, the largest number of employees is the, the operator class. We have 140 operators with, with an average salary of $47,000. Those are the, the lowest skilled of the, the workers, and, and just by, by contrast, we have a relatively small number of engineers that are in the $75,000 to $88,000 range for unburdened salary.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Benson. I have a, a question on that document that you were just kind of referring to, because I have, I think that the job figures we have in our packet are from the original plan. Director, can you point me to, to a page or somewhere where I might find that?
Mr. Chair, this new salary information was provided to us this afternoon, so we'll get a copy of it to the commission. We actually have, I think, a number of copies we can...
All right. This is great. This helps a lot, and I'm comparing this to the existing Exhibit C, which is the, the wages and benefits. And so, I'm noticing that your operator positions are, are showing a higher wage than what they were before. Perhaps the other ones didn't include benefits or something like that on the original proposal. Is that... So the operator in Exhibit C, so the one that we considered last year, is showing a wage of $41,933, and now it's showing $47,596?
Commissioner, I mean, Chair Olivas, correct that as we've had to come back to the commission for different pieces, the wages have increased for the operator position, the lowest level that the company will have, that has increased their wages as well.
Okay. I, I definitely think that's, that's a positive thing. That was one of my, you know, original concerns with this whole project was the, the large number of jobs that, that kind of fell in that pretty low wage range, where we were really getting close to a point where they're, they're probably going to need other public subsidies for Medicaid, food stamps, things like that. But it seems like that, that wage is getting closer to a point where it's a little bit more of a, of a working-class wage rather than a, you know, working poor, so to speak. So I, I think that's, that's a good thing. That's an improvement to, to what this is. You know, I will note, the original exhibit has 1,200 jobs. I, I think even this exhibit is different than the original one that we saw, because at one time, I feel like this was touted as being 3,000, 2,000 jobs or something like that. So I, I understand that, you know, that the company has seen some, some tough financial times, and so, you know, maybe this is, is kind of a right sizing of the operation.
Mr. Chair, and that original job number piece was with the original manufacturing facility at Mesa del Sol, and so this is an interim point till we get to the Mesa del Sol site, that we're just doing assembly as Maxion navigates the federal environment and regulatory environment pieces, but the ultimate goal is to still get to the development of a manufacturing facility and being able to actually manufacture the entire panel from the pieces all the way up, to have those large number of jobs.
So this, this agreement before us doesn't appropriate any of our county money. There's no county money involved in this. So we are acting as a fiscal agent for the state, or why are we involved in this?
Mr. Chair, we are not, this is only for the purpose of the state being able to use some of its LEEDA cash funds, its LEEDA closing funds for the assembly site. We simply have to, the county have to sign off on it, because we're a party to the agreement that includes the GRT share, which is not being used at this site. It's only used at the Mesa del Sol site. So we are only acting to agreeing, to saying the state can use their LEEDA funds for the assembly site. But there is no GRT from the county that is being shared for that's the assembly site, and there's no county money being pushed into for the assembly site. This is only us just saying the state can do what it wishes to do with its LEEDA funds.
And that's about $6 million in LEEDA funds? Is that correct?
Chair Olivas, correct.
Okay. And so, the impact of this, this is, you know, in addition to the, you know, obviously, these are going to be folks that would be employed here, but are they going to be paying property taxes, or someone's paying property taxes on that facility, and they're paying taxes on the equipment that's going in there and all those kinds of things? So, so they are paying those other things?
We have an IRB, but it's only for personal property.
Mr. Chair, so the IRB for the new site, for the assembly site, is only for the equipment only, not for the real property taxes, but that's being done through the city, and the city is also the fiscal agent for the state LEEDA funds. So, the city will be managing those funds as well, as well as the IRBs through the city as well. So our portion of this project is purely only when the manufacturing site comes to fruition, that a portion of our county gross-to-seat taxes would be going back to the company for development of the infrastructure and the site. Other than that, that's our only involvement in the project. But per the LEEDA GRT share portion that was amended by the legislature a few years ago, all the government entities have to agree to participate in the GRT share in order for it to work and have to pledge their portion of the gross-to-seat taxes to the project. So because it's in the city of Albuquerque, the state of New Mexico, city of Albuquerque, and the Burnley County have to participate.
Okay. I think that, that makes sense. And just the last thing I'll highlight, the cost per job roughly, if, if the 294 comes to fruition, and again, this isn't a cost to us, but to the state, we all pay into the state, is about a little, $20,408 per job. I don't really know how to assess that, whether that's good or bad, but just pointing that out, and I do hope that this is a, a great success, and I do hope that you are able to, to bring the other plant online. I know there's been a lot of challenges, and the federal environment is very uncertain right now, so I, I understand that, and, you know, glad that you're here in some form, and that's all I've got, if there's...
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Benson.
I just, that was, I like, I just like that approach, the cost per job, just to know what we're costing, and at $20,000, just based on the, the rough numbers, the 300 jobs at $20.8 million, that comes out to about $70,000. jobs at twenty point eight million, that comes out to about seventy thousand dollars average salary. So the first year, by investing twenty thousand dollars, we now have three hundred people making an average, rough average, of seventy thousand in that first year. And then they continue, seventy thousand dollars a year going forward. So I think it's a good investment. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Appreciate that perspective, Commissioner. That puts that in, puts that in a reference frame, so I appreciate that. Anyone else? Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Benson.
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboa. Vice Chair Barboa?
Looks like she may no longer be with us.
Chair Olivas.
Yes.
Thank you.
Right. Passes on a four-zero. Thank you very much. Thank you for being here tonight. All right. Last item of the evening is the item that we had to move off of consent. Sorry, Corbin, had to wait till the very end with us. And so this is the Estancia Basin Water Planning Committee appointment. There was just kind of a technical error in the language there, so unfortunately, we had to pull it. And I believe Juliana is going to present.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So the item before the board is the Estancia Basin Water Planning Committee appointment. There needs to be a clarification correction to the published motion. So the motion should read motion to approve the appointment of Corbin Cartra to the Estancia Basin Water Planning Committee as the governmental representative. With that, I stand for questions.
Thank you, Juliana. And so just to be clear, we're basically striking at large and inserting governmental representative. It's just the, the way that the MOU is drafted with the cog. So I, do we have to, we have to amend it first, or?
Yes. Transparency, I would vote on the amendment.
All right. So I'll make a motion to strike at large and insert governmental representative. Any discussion? If we could get a roll call on the amendment, please?
Commissioner Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Benson.
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboa.
Yes.
Chair Olivas.
Yes. All right. So the amended, passed as five-zero, puts us back on the item as amended. Any discussion on this or questions? Does give me the opportunity just to say thank you to Corbin. He is our county hydrogeologist. Got your title right? Okay. He's doing a great job, and a lot of my constituents out in the East Mountains really appreciate the work he's doing, well monitoring and geology and hydrology out there, very important work. He's doing work here in, in the west side of the mountain chain, too, in Sandia Heights and all over the county. So we really appreciate you serving the county and proud to sponsor your appointment to the Estancia Basin Water Planning. So with that, I move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none? If we could get a roll call, please.
Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboa.
Yes.
Chair Olivas.
Yes.
Thank you.
Passes on a five-zero. Thank you, Corbin. And with that, that concludes our business for the evening. Our next meeting is going to be Tuesday, March eleventh, right here in Kansas City's chambers at three PM. That'll be a zoning meeting, and then at five, we will have our regular administrative meeting again on March eleventh. And if there's no further business, this meeting is adjourned.